Good evening, everyone. Tonight is August 14th, 2024. It is 6:01 PM, and I would like to call to order the City of Columbus City Council meeting for tonight. Our first order of business will be the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of America, one nation under God, with the fullness of justice for all.
Our next order of business is Letter B, the Consent Agenda. Would someone like to make a motion to approve the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda for August 14th, 2024, City Council meeting.
Is there a second?
This is Janet, I second.
I'll call for the vote.
Rob, aye.
Yep.
Janet, aye.
Sue, aye.
Ron, aye.
And Jesse, aye.
So the next is the consent agenda.
I'm sorry?
The next is the consent agenda.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Would someone like to make a motion to approve that?
So this is Janet. I move to approve Consent Agenda, removing items number one and two due to numerous errors. So it would be just number three, approving the bill payments.
This is Sue, I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other questions or discussions? I'll call for the vote.
Rob, aye.
Janet, aye.
Sue, aye.
Ron, aye.
Jesse, aye.
And the mayor, I request permission to just make one more motion.
Sure, go ahead.
So I think you have all noticed that I pull the minutes on almost every meeting, and it's due to not having them be at the level we want them to be. We had engaged in a contract with Time Savers, hoping that that would get us our minutes faster and they would be well constructed. But we've had problems with lots of errors. And so I would like to make the motion to terminate the contract with Time Savers. In the interim, we'll check with our contractor, our media contractor, to see if she's capable of taking this on. I think she did that when she was in Monticello. Or if she knows somebody who isn't. And the staff would have to, you know, take on this until we get another vendor in place.
Can you clarify who the backup is, the interim? Who did you say was going to do it?
Oh, I was gonna, I'm meeting with Haley, the media consultant that we hired. And she, I believe, told us that she did this. This was one of her jobs when she was in Monticello. So she may be willing to take it on under her contract. If she's not, then the staff will have to take it on, just like they did in the past, until we come up with another solution.
Okay.
So, Rob here. The question I have on that is, would that Haley, would that just be from their interim until we got someone hired to help Jack with that Assistant Administrator position? And then roll it back to them, maybe? Or?
That's possible. I mean, I'm not, I don't know if she will be willing to do it. But I think, you know, we could approach it as an interim solution. And if it turns out that she's willing to do it ongoing, that'd be fine with me, too.
Okay.
One other option we could look at, too, on that is that there may be somebody local that does that.
Yeah.
So we could actually put out some ads and advertise it. But I think what Janet's proposing to Haley would be considered an interim solution and staff would be a backup.
Okay.
Okay.
So that's my motion.
Okay, I'll second that.
So we have a motion and a second. Any other questions or discussion?
I just, I just want to be clear, because I don't want to confuse this because I voted against hiring that Haley. Because obviously, you all know, I bring up the fact that I want to keep stuff in-house and not contract it as much. So that is why I'm gonna vote no on this. I just wanted that to be clear, why I was gonna be saying no, so.
Thank you for that clarification.
So you're not hanging out there like, what's going on? Yeah, so, Rob, no.
Janet, aye.
Sue, aye.
Ron, aye.
And Jesse, aye.
Thank you.
Public open forum. Is there anyone online or here who would like to speak at public open forum?
The Columbus Lions would. We don't have the agenda, so is this how we would just?
You're not on the agenda.
We are not.
Oh, I thought they were.
No, that's the Forest Lake Lions.
Okay, sure.
Sorry. Lions, lions everywhere.
Forest Lake Lions are stomping on your ground?
Pull your microphones real close, so we can hear you.
So Lion Gina Sherman and Lion Dick Howard from the Columbus Lions. We are just here to see about getting our liquor license approved for Fall Fest this year. I think all of our documents have been submitted to Lori. And as far as I know, we have nothing outstanding, so.
Okay.
So when will we approve that? Next meeting?
Can we? We can.
Or do we do it tonight?
What is the application for, Gina?
The liquor license.
For the Fall Fest?
We'll have to get that. We'll, we can approve that. It'll have to be on the next Agenda meeting, because we'll have to do some notifications on that. So when did you get that to Lori?
Last week.
Okay. And it may have been the, everything went out. I think I got it to her maybe last Friday, and we'd already put the packet out. And we said we could do it on the 28th, then.
Okay, of August?
Of August, correct, yeah. So I'll get up with her, make sure we have everything, and we'll get that on the meeting for the 28th.
Okay. Should we be here, then? Or do we not need to be?
Probably a good idea, in case somebody had any questions.
Questions? Okay, perfect.
Yeah, we definitely want to get that passed. Yeah.
You can't have.
Yeah, so we can make it bigger and better.
Yep, we're excited, yes.
We are, too.
Good.
All right.
Thank you.
See you on the 28th.
All right, thank you.
Two weeks.
Yes.
Anyone else for public open forum? And then we'll move on to the Forest Lake Lions Club Tip Board Sale. That's pages one through five in our packet.
Thank you, Jesse. The Lions Club of Forest Lake has submitted a request to the City of Columbus to conduct the sale of tip board tickets pursuant to Minnesota statutes Section 349.171 in connection with the city Fall Fest event on September 21st, 2024. The Lions Club of Forest Lake is a nonprofit organization and has previously submitted a Minnesota lawful gambling application to the Gambling Control Board. There have been no problems with previous city one-day gambling license reviews and approval recommendations to the State Office of Alcohol and Gambling Enforcement for the Forest Lake Lions Club-sponsored activities. State statute 39.213 requires that a city approve by resolution and a two-thirds vote the approval of an off-site gambling application within its jurisdiction. Staff recommends that the City of Columbus approve the gambling premise permit for the Lions Club of Forest Lake to conduct the sale of tip board tickets on September 21st, 2024 at 16319 Kettle River Boulevard, Columbus, Minnesota, in accordance with the terms and requirements of the Minnesota Gambling Board.
Okay, I'll make the motion that we approve Resolution 24-07 for the Forest Lake Lions Tip Board Sale. Is there a second?
Rob, I'll second.
Are there any other questions or discussion?
So can I just ask what a tip board ticket is?
It's for the meat raffle.
Oh, for the meat raffle, okay.
That's just the term that they use.
So that, and that will be at the Fall Fest, because it's on our Fall Fest day?
That's right.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, I'll call for the vote.
Rob, aye.
Janet, aye.
Sue, aye.
Ron, aye.
Jesse, aye. All right, we're gonna have a meat raffle. Item number three, Fall Fest Bingo License, and that's pages six through nine in our packet.
The Lake Center for Youth and Families has submitted an application to the City of Columbus to conduct bingo in connection with the city Fall Fest event on September 21st, 2024. The City of Columbus did not find any outstanding issues or does not have any knowledge of adverse consequences related to issuance of gambling premises permit for this group. The Lake Centers for Youth and Families is a nonprofit organization and has previously submitted a Minnesota lawful gambling application to the city and the Gambling Control Board. Minnesota statute 39.213 requires that a city approve by resolution and a two-thirds vote the approval of an off-site gambling within its own local jurisdiction. Staff recommends that the City of Columbus approve Resolution 24-08 an off-site gambling permit for the Lake Center for Youth and Families to conduct excluded bingo on September 21st, 2024 at 16319 Kettle River Boulevard, Columbus, Minnesota, in accordance with the terms and requirements of the Minnesota Gambling Board.
So I'll make the motion again to approve Resolution 24-08 for the LCYF Fall Fest Bingo License. Is there a second?
This is Janet, I second.
Any questions or discussion?
I just wanted to add one thing. So they are gonna do two types of bingo this year. One is for kids, and one is for the adults. The kids is not going to be a gambling thing. It's just a fun way for them to play. So I just don't want, I didn't want anybody to get confused when they start talking about the kids bingo, that we were encouraging kids to gamble. It's not, it's not gonna be for money or anything like that, so.
All right, anything else, anyone? I'll call for the vote.
Rob, aye.
Janet, aye.
Sue, aye.
Ron, aye.
And Jesse, aye. We're gonna have bingo. Number four, LMC Tort Liability Waiver, pages 10 and 11 in our packet.
The League of Minnesota Cities Insurance Trust members who obtain liability coverage from the LMCIT must choose to waive tort liability limits to the extent of coverage purchased. The decision to waive or not waive the statutory tort limits must be made annually by City Council. Attachment one contains an explanation of the waiver options. The City of Columbus has historically not waived the monetary limits as set forth in Minnesota statutes 46.04. This time, City Council is asked to approve the non-waiver of the monetary limits on municipal tort liability established by Minnesota statute 466.04.
So I'll make the motion to approve. Is there a second?
Do you need to read the whole thing?
Yeah, I have a question for Bill.
Go ahead.
I don't know if it would sway my decision, but, so what this is saying on page 11 is that, that first bullet is, if a member does not waive the statutory tort limits, that's what we're voting on. That's what we normally have done.
Correct.
Okay, so that means that an individual could recover no more than $500,000 on any claim. But if the member, in the next bullet, if the member waives the statutory tort limits and does not purchase excess liability, then a single claimant could recover $2 million. So that's quite a big difference. And, I mean, I would want a claimant to claim $2 million if they're owed $2 million. So how much more is that cost for our insurance if that goes up?
Generally, when you don't do that, you have to purchase the excess, the excess insurance. And most cities do not do that.
Okay.
And there are some that do, that will add an additional million dollars to their policy. Historically, Columbus has not done it. So we're basing that recommendation on historical precedence. There is maybe a little bit more coverage. I'll let Megan address what some of the risk may be if you don't do it. But I'm not sure it's worth doing the extra purchase for the excess of insurance.
Okay.
So it's a minimum of at least 3.5% additional cost if you waive the statutory tort limits. And it does not have any technical benefit to the city. It is only to the claimant.
Okay, but the claimant would be a Columbus resident, right?
Mm-hmm. Well, not necessarily.
Not necessarily.
Not necessarily, right?
How about, do we have any history of claimants?
Not to my knowledge. I think Columbus has probably been, at least from what I know, for the past two years, has been relatively free of any claims filed through the league on any issues.
Okay.
I'm looking at Jim for a historical perspective here.
And this does not include workman's comp claims.
Okay.
I don't believe that we've been sued for anything since I've been here. Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, knock on wood.
And we exactly right.
Okay, that was all the questions I had. Thank you.
Anybody else? So I made the motion. Was there a second?
This is Janet, I second.
Janet, seconded. Any other questions or discussion? I'll call for the vote, Rob.
Rob, aye.
Janet, aye.
Sue, aye.
Ron, aye.
Item number five, Ordinance 24-02, Chapter 7A Updates, Pages 12 through 20.
We have our, Eleanor Han has joined us remotely, and I will let Eleanor present these next two ordinance issues. Eleanor?
Hi, can you guys hear me?
Yep, perfectly.
Perfect. So we have discussed these two ordinances, these two housekeeping ordinances, a few times now. Is there any lingering questions that we want to address off the bat?
None from me.
Good. Sorry, Jack, did you switch the screen?
Sorry.
I don't have the ordinances pulled up in front of me, unfortunately.
Oh, okay.
That's okay. So the first one is primarily regarding 7A and the housekeeping amendments for clarity, readability, and errors that were made in different iterations going to the codification process and finally onto the website when redoing the CI Light District. And so it's a lot of that. And then fixing up the table of contents to make that a lot clearer. And then the second one before you right now is for the sign ordinance. We've done a lot of housekeeping on that since it hasn't really been touched in quite a few years, and our districts have changed. So clarifying those two.
So we went through all of this at our workshop quite thoroughly, correct? Does anyone have any, anything you saw that you would rather discuss tonight?
No, good job with all those edits. Thank you.
Yep.
In that case, I'll make the motion to approve Ordinance 24-02, Chapter 7A of the City Code Reformating and Prior Code Error Corrections. Is there a second?
This is Sue, I'll second.
Any questions or discussion? Rob?
Rob, aye.
Janet, aye.
Sue, aye.
Ron, aye.
And Jesse, aye. Then flip to number six on the top of the next page. I'll make the motion to approve Ordinance 24-03, Chapter 7B of the City Code with updates as included in the staff report. Is there a second?
This is Janet, I second.
Any other questions or outstanding items anybody saw? If not, I'll call for the vote.
Rob, aye.
Janet, aye.
Sue, aye.
Ron, aye.
And Jesse, aye. On to the number seven, pages 32 through 35 in our packet. Jack, would you?
Again, I will turn that over to Eleanor to give a report on the setting the public hearing to vacate Guidance Homes Drainage and Utility easements. It's exhibited in pages 32 and 35 in your packet, Eleanor.
Yes, so this is a fairly simple lot line adjustment. These are handled administratively. If they follow a certain number of qualifications, just moving a line a little bit to give some more access to the north properties driveway. Unfortunately, since this was already plotted, well, not unfortunately, but since this was already plotted, there is an existing Drainage and Utility easement. These need to be vacated and then reestablished along the new line. And that has to be done through City Council. The first step is setting a public hearing. Unlike CUPs and IUPs in that there does need to be a formal resolution for that, and then it needs to be published in the newspaper twice for those vacations. It's the same process as vacating a street, which you would need a majority of the people along that street to sign a petition to get that easement or that street vacated. Both of these properties are owned by the same person. So that petition is just one signature. It's a pretty straightforward, move the line a little bit, move the easement a little bit, and it will come back at a public hearing on September 11th if the resolution is approved to do so. Do you have any questions?
Yes. So this is Sue. Our, my question, are we voting on vacating it? Or are we voting just to set the hearing date?
Today, it would just be setting the hearing date.
Okay, thank you.
During that public hearing, there will be a little bit more information, if you guys would like, about that lot line adjustment. But the actual lot line adjustment is usually done administratively. But since it has to come before you guys for the vacation of the easement, we can, we can go over that as well.
Okay, thank you.
So Eleanor, what, what development is this?
So this is Priner's Preserve.
Okay.
Which is why the lots are fairly small. They do fit all of the zoning regulations for the mixed-use, high-density, and the Priner's Preserve PUD.
Okay, so does this, does this affect anything if there was a house to go in there? I know it's, it looks like it's a lot of record. Is that just gonna make that lot smaller and we'll still maintain that easement? Is the idea?
The idea is yes. Both lots will, I mean, one does become slightly smaller, but...
But still buildable with, with...
Still buildable.
Okay, cool. Now the rooftop, you know?
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions?
That's it, for me.
Then I'll make the motion to approve Resolution 24-09 to set a public hearing to vacate the Guidance Homes DU easement. Is there a second?
This is Janet, I second.
I'll call for the vote.
Rob, aye.
Janet, aye.
Sue, aye.
Ron, aye.
And Jesse, aye. Number eight, 2025 Budget Discussion, 2025 Capital Improvement Plan, pages 36 through 37 in our packet.
Thank you. The proposed 2025 Capital Improvement Plan will be discussed tonight and reviewed at our council meeting. The plan consists of seven items. The Public Works Equipment Replacement Fund, the Public Works Paving and Reservicing Fund, the Park's Capital Fund, the Park's Dedication Fund, the Fire Equipment Replacement Fund, the Fire Hall Capital Fund, and the General Fund Capital Plan. The Public Works Paving and Reservicing Fund, which is also known as the Black Top and Gravel Fund, was sent to you earlier this, or later this afternoon. And there were some errors in the form and the spreadsheet that didn't allow us to do some edits. So we apologize for the delay in getting that out to you. The Park Dedication Capital Fund were also, had some adjustments to be made, and there were some errors in some of that that had to be adjusted before it was sent out. So you have those, they're also in those spreadsheets before you, too. So staff will be seeking direction from council regarding inputs, adjustments, and modifications to the proposed 2025 Capital Improvement Plan. And at this time, we'll open it up for any discussions or questions you may have regarding the Public Works Capital Improvement Plan.
I have a couple of questions I can start off with. The first is, what's the highlighting supposed to tell us? There's two different colors here. I wasn't sure, like, if that was meant to say, to have a zero in on it, but is it just, like, left over from?
Say that again.
The highlighting on the spreadsheet. So you have brown highlighting, you have yellow highlighting.
The highlighting was left over from...
Okay, so does, there's no meaning to it?
...previous presentation last year.
Okay.
I think it just kind of deciphers different equipment. So like, if you look at the brown or the orange, whatever color your IC, the plow trucks, you know, the other things are equipment.
Okay.
So I mean, no other reason than to try to break it up.
Okay, I just wasn't sure if there was some meaning.
That wasn't, that wasn't me.
Okay.
That did that, so.
So it's not a way to code it or something like that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so then the other question I have is, I've been looking in the notes section. So the replacement every 12 years for snowplow trucks, I know that that's just sort of a guideline. It seems like we're going longer than that. Is that right?
What we do, so a handful, so we used to always only run two plow trucks. And then, you know, we had some breakdowns, and then we decided that we were gonna keep a plow truck as a, as a third, you know what I mean? So as a backup, if we have a lot of snow, sometimes we'll run three trucks. Sometimes it's just a backup. So we don't always use it, but we have it here. So as a general rule, it's probably to look like we have one longer because that truck just, we sell the old one, and then the truck that we're replacing moves down. Does that make sense?
Yep, so, so you are trying to stick to the 12-year schedule?
Yes.
Okay. And then my other question...
And it's, it's, it could be 13, you know what I mean? But as a general rule of thumb, we're, we're trying to stick into that schedule.
You know, I was asking because it looked like the 2026 that was for 2016. So that's, I don't know if we bought it in 2016, but that's a lot further out. That's 10 years instead of, right?
That is 10.
So I wasn't sure if that was in error or there was a reason that we moved it up by two years or... So that was my first question. And then the second question is, under the notes section, 2022, we must have sold the 2005 Chevy 1500, whatever that is, I'm assuming is some sort of truck. But I didn't see the $7,000 on the, on the spreadsheet for the equipment sale, and I don't know...
Where are you seeing that?
I'm seeing it under notes.
Where at?
Notes on the bottom.
Oh, okay. The 2, yeah, in the middle.
So it shows, it shows $7,000 for the sale of that, but I didn't see it in our schedule. And I wasn't sure if that meant there's $7,000...
So what we did in the notes is, I take a stab at what we're going to get for it. I I say that we're going to get $7,000, right?
But this was in 2022, so it already happened.
It did already happen.
Did we get seven?
Huh?
Did we get seven?
No, we got like 15.
Okay, well, it's still not in here. There's no there's no entry for sale revenue. That's what that's my point in 2022. So I don't know if that's, I don't know why that is, but maybe there's a grand or two hanging out somewhere that we don't know about.
It's actually in 21, it's in 130.
Online, in that top section where it says equipment, sale, trade, disposal, and then it's 15,130 under actual 2021.
Okay, so the note is wrong. Wasn't in 2022. Okay, that's fine. So then going back to the 10-year, is that is that on purpose or?
That should be 12.
Okay, so that should get moved out to 2028?
Yep.
Okay.
So that truck, that was the one we sold on that Min bid, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
So we so we started selling stuff on Min bid a handful of years ago, and we've been pretty successful with the dollars that we get for equipment. So I mean, at this point, I see no reason not to keep doing that. We've we've been fortunate and hope to always stay fortunate that way, so.
So the only thing that we have planned right now for 2025 budget is a F-450 Ford with utility box.
Correct.
Okay.
And that so that that piece of equipment is the utility truck that gets used in Public Works Sewer and Water. So the dollar value that you see here for 2025 is one-third of the cost. So one-third goes to sewer, one-third goes to water, one-third goes to Public Works.
Oh, okay.
Does that make sense?
Yep. Jim, that 15,000, that is not from your pickup. That was for the sale of a dump truck?
The dump truck of a 2,000 GMC, one ton. Yeah, that's the that's the truck.
So question on the grater. Did we didn't we just purchase a new grater? Because this is showing it as a 2011. Did we traded that one in, right?
We did.
So that.
Thought we updated that, too. We talked about that.
Yeah, that was going to be a question.
So yeah, I think it was last year, two years ago? Last year, because it was at Fall Fest.
I'm kind of wondering if there's something funky with our sheet here, because Jack and I sat down and we made updates on this. And I told them to change the 2010, and I watched them do it, to a to a 150 CAT grater and then make that a 2023. So there's something funky here with our spreadsheet, I think.
Well, and my question, too, is that you have, it it looks like we're trying to buy it again seven years down the road, which seems, do we really buy? I know the seven years. Okay, so that was a that was a question is, I know that you do the buyback program.
Yep.
So.
So the.
Should we want to discuss that a little bit more? Like, do we want to continue that? Or I know, Jack, you had some ideas about the buyback program and whether or not that was.
So the buyback program, we are not locked into anything. Just so we know that. What we do, what we say we do, if we're going to do a seven-year buyback, we buy warranty for seven years. And then at the end of that, we don't have to do anything. We just run out of warranty at the end of seven years. So the previous one was a 2010, and we sold it in 2023. Now, that said, I'm, we are fortunate that we sold it in 2023 because the company that bought it put between $40,000 and $50,000 into it because it broke not long after we sold it to them. So we, knock on wood, got got lucky on that one. So that's that's the main reason on having the warranty, right? So once you start getting out to that seven years, now you're going to start replacing tires to the tune of 12,000 to $16,000 and just more general maintenance than oil changes and filters.
Well, and you know.
But again, we're not locked into anything.
Right.
And Jim's correct, there's no lock-in that requires you to do that or participate in the repurchase at that time. But as part of any due diligence, we would look at the condition of the grater and see if it's cost advantageous to us to either participate in the buyback or to continue on keeping that equipment and purchase sell it on down the road, somewhat like the previous grater was done.
So I guess my question is, you know, if we have it on the spreadsheet to replace in seven years, we buy these things cash, so we put money aside. If it's really going to be 13 years likely, we're putting a lot of money away that we might not have to. So that's why I'm raising the question whether seven years is the right interval to be budgeting for a replacement.
Typically, the answer would be no. But, you know, as we discussed yesterday, what I want to do is is look at these to see if it's advantageous to do this on a repurchase agreement or if there's value in keeping it for an extended period of time. And a lot of that's going to be determined on the condition of the equipment. And, you know, may maybe it's a lemon and, you know, we're starting to have lots of expensive repairs. But I think this is something we need to do on each each one of these, and we need to evaluate them, even though they may be scheduled for 10 or 12 years or seven years or 15 years, whatever. Some of them may have some more life, and some of them may even need to be sold before then. But this is something we need to do before this time arrives, so we'll know exactly what to do.
So my question is, do we want to leave it at seven or do we want to push it on? It sounds to me, if the last one was, did you say 13 years? I mean, I don't know what the track record has been, but seven seems too short, and it's a lot of money to put away or something that we're really probably not going to replace in seven years.
I don't know if we can do that. I don't know what kind of agreement we have with CAT on the repurchase agreement, if it expands.
We don't have any agreement with it.
Okay.
So they call it a buyback program. They they just guarantee to give you a certain price.
Right.
I wouldn't probably sell it to them anyways because I can sell it for more money outright.
Right.
So it's just like trading in a car, right? They're going to give you $8,000, and you know, you can sell it for 10,000 or 12,000 on your own, and that's kind of the that's kind of the program. I don't know that I would ever trade it in unless I.
And on that, in the past, we had offered it up to local contractors first, right? And it was like a sealed envelope bid system.
Yep.
Right? That's kind of how we did it in the past.
Yep.
And I mean, maybe Cheryl, you can speak to this, but I'm just thinking if this shaves, moving this out two years or four years or whatever is the right interval, shaves 20, 30, $40,000 off our levy, I'd be all for that.
Yep, and it would. We received $7,800 for the old pickup in 2022, just so you know, Jim. So what Elizabeth had written down, the 2022.
Two different vehicles, though.
Correct.
Yeah.
15,000 for the dump truck, 7,800 for the pickup.
Seven for the other pickup.
And my point is, the 7,800 is not showing up on the spreadsheet.
7,800 was actually put into Fund 120, Public Works. It was not put back into Fund 401.
Was that by mistake or just on purpose?
I don't know. I wasn't here.
Seems like it should be in the equipment capital improvement, like the rest of the sold equipment is.
I I can tell you that I don't know why it wouldn't have been put back in here.
Yeah, no.
I don't know why.
And and it's probably, I mean, it's been audited and stuff. You don't want to mess around with it now, but okay.
You could direct me to do a funds transfer to account for the money.
Okay, well, I'll keep that in mind when we get to our motions. I might just do that. Okay.
As a as a general rule of thumb, whatever's sold rolls back into this fund. So in seven years, hypothetically, we're talking road grater.
Yeah.
If I sell the road grater for 250,000, that 250,000 goes into here, and that, I'm not wearing my glasses now, so the 425,000 is now, you know, if we sell it for 200, is only 225,000.
Okay. So going back to my question on the grater, so will we just see a different proposal when we're seeing this for the final, or do we want to tackle that tonight?
What we can do is, we can bring it back up to you on the 24th, and we can see what the difference it makes in in the levy by moving it back out three to five years.
Okay.
I can tell you that I wouldn't feel comfortable reducing the amount that we levy for equipment because it's only going up, it ain't going down. And if you move the road grater out, call it five more years, it's probably $550,000. So, I mean, they're they're not dropping in price in any fashion. So I I could I would concede that we're on the light end, and we're trying to be as creative as possible to make it cash flow, we'll say.
Yep.
And if you reduce it, it's just, I mean, you can clearly do what you want to, but I I would advocate not to, just because I think at some point, I'm going to come to you and say, I need it, I need to raise it by 50 then.
I I think it'd be good to see the number, but I don't think it's going to have a big effect on it. Because if you look at this, if you go beyond that, when you're looking at cash flow, if you can project that far out, we're going to be running in the negative. So it would be interesting just to compare the numbers, though.
Well, I think you can do a present value analysis and determine whether or not it's worth it or not without sitting here guessing about it. So maybe Cheryl can do that, and then we'll actually have some numbers to look at.
And I think that would be good, but but I I do agree with Jim is, I think, a reduction in the equipment replacement fund transfers, since we've kind of got it established, is probably we'd want to think twice about doing that and make sure that we're doing the right thing.
And again, with any piece of equipment on here, this is what we're calling a placeholder. That doesn't mean that we have to buy, sell, or replace anything at any point. I mean, if it's a good piece of equipment, we've hung on to it in the past. If it's not, we send it down the road or we use it as our, we'll call it our spare. And and that's what we've done in the past, but.
Well, and I, you know, I think.
Obviously, we can do anything we want, right?
Yeah, well, and I I agree with all that you've done in the past, but I just think that it it's worth looking at it again and look at whether these intervals make sense. I mean, it doesn't do us any good to sit there and tax, you know, tax our residents more money than have them just sit there for several years. I mean, it's it's a balance, right? And I think that present value analysis could be helpful in determining whether or not it makes sense. I get what you're saying, too, and I'm not I'm not trying to cut, you know, undermine your your equipment replacement strategy at all. But I just think that we don't, we don't want to be just sitting on a bunch of money.
If you look at the bottom, we're not necessarily sitting on a bunch. If you get to the road grater line item, we're actually underwater. So so I mean, it ebbs and flows. There's a little bit of money in it this year, and then we spend it down, and then we're, you know, at 100 grand, and then it's at, you know, 600 grand, and then you buy something, and then it's, you know what I mean? It's it bounces around. The whole the whole intent of the capital improvement is to keep a flat levy and not.
Absolutely.
Not a, you know what I mean?
Yep, I am all for that, too. But I think seeing it on paper spelled out will be really helpful to me to might just go back to exactly what you have right now.
So 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 just so I'm clear, what do you want to see?
What I want to see is taking that seven-year replacement interval and pushing it out more consistently with what actually seems to happen, which isn't, we plan to buy it in seven years. Then that, if I'm understanding how you do the projections, that affects how much we levy every year to try to meet that dollar amount. And yes, you're right, if you push it on a couple, you know, several years, you're going to have to increase that amount because nothing goes down, it only goes up. But I don't know, I don't, without seeing the numbers, I can't say whether that makes sense or not. So I just want to see that strategy and compare it to this.
Just back history. When I first started here in 2006, we were doing a five-year buyback. Every five years, we rotated out graders. We did that for, so we got one the first year that I was here, and then, so we did a few. When we got to this 2010, that's on this spreadsheet today, the previous council said, no, we don't want to sell it because the next model was going to be the new emission model, which has the def fluid and without getting into all that. That was kind of a contentious changeover, so so we ended up hanging on to it. That's the first year that we've not done the buyback program. And then when we bought the loader, we talked kind of extensively about doing the warranty and the buyback program, which is why we ended up doing the same thing with the road grater. That was all topic of conversation. So again, we can push it out, but that's just kind of the backstory on how we got to where we are today.
And 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 I agree, I think it'd be good just to do the PV analysis, just to see what the numbers show.
Yep.
Another factor, though, you look at in replacing the equipment sometimes, is there are major changes, especially in emission controls? No, we advanced the purchase of the truck one year because they were coming out with new emission standards that had to be met. They were going to raise the price of the vehicle about $70,000. So, you know, you get out beyond these other things, and and these, these are not, to me, they're not set in stone that on this year, you're going to do this. It depends on all these other factors involved, and the other ones, the analysis of it. So.
Right.
We can certainly furnish those numbers and take a look at it and go from there.
Yeah, and and don't misunderstand, I'm not suggesting we do it different. I just want to see the numbers both ways.
I mean, we make we make decisions all the time. Some are good or some ain't, and we and we all do it, right? So, you know, fortunately, we got rid of the last one in the nick of time, right? And not saying that this one, you know, that that contractor is going to run that thing for another 20 years, and he's going to put money into it or or not, you know what I mean? But, you know, you, the equipment runs for years and years and years. It's just, you know, the the thought process that we have in Public Works is whatever we buy is an insurance policy. If it never leaves the shop, we know that things are going fantastic. In the construction world, if they never leave the shop, they're losing money hand over fist. So it's just two different thought processes.
My last question is about the skid steer. So there's $90,000 in the in the 2024 budget, and then one, two, three years later, there's $81,000. I just didn't understand that. Why, three years later, it looks like we're buying it again?
Can't answer that.
Is that a mistake?
Must be.
Okay, that's why that's why we do it, so we we can take that one out? Okay.
Yes.
That's the end of my questions.
Anyone else?
Are we looking, are we just looking at the first page right now? Are we going to all of them?
We'll go through all of them.
Okay. I don't have any other questions on that page.
Do you want me to make the directions, then, that we talked about?
Yes.
For this one? So then I would.
Janet, if I could, I just have one more quick question before you make a motion. This Ventrac 4520 tractor stormwater pond maintenance, oh, to 2026, we're looking at a $45,000 budget. What what exactly is that? Because doesn't RVS cut the roundabouts right now?
Not necessarily the roundabout.
Okay.
This is, we're calling it a placeholder, we may or may not ever buy this. But we have to do pond maintenance, and we've kind of been bouncing this one from like 2022, and we just keep moving it out. We're trying to figure out, one, how many ponds that we have to maintain. We know that we have a few to maintain, and we're really trying to figure out the best piece of equipment to do it. Because we don't necessarily have a great one to do it, if that makes sense.
Okay.
So some of some of these ponds that you're maintaining are in people's yards or are right next to houses. To be quite honest with you, the mowing equipment that we have throws a lot of material around.
Sure.
So I don't really want to run those next to somebody's house and take out windows and siding, and you know what I mean?
No, yeah.
So we're really trying to figure out, what is that piece of equipment? We just don't know what it is yet. So that was one of the things that we looked at. We're actually going to demo one. So so we put it on there. That seems to be the most logical. I know Running Aces has one, and they use theirs a lot for brush and grass. And so, I mean, it's pretty versatile. It's kind of an open cab, so you're out in the elements. So if it's 100 degrees outside, you know what I mean? There's, it's not like it's a cabin air.
You just go faster.
Sucking the dust, you know what I mean? So I I mean, I I don't know what this piece of equipment is, but that's just kind of a placeholder. And in 2025, when we're talking about it, it'll probably move out to 2027, so.
Yeah, no, and and I appreciate the explanation on it. And then, so so it's for the pond, the pond maintenance. This isn't like a a two-fold item where it's the Ventrac and money for funding for them stormwaters? Because we talked that we're going to have to dredge those out at some point, too, right?
That is just for maintenance.
Okay.
So so you need to do mowing, right? You need to knock all the weeds and trees down and things like that. And then then there is maintenance at some point. We've talked about stormwater utility fees and all sorts of things in years past, but, you know, we've not not ever done anything with it.
Okay, thank you, Jim.
One of the other things that we're going to do, and I talked to Janet and Jesse about this the other day, is we're going to determine on all these stormwater ponds, which ones are city responsibilities and which one may be private responsibility. Because we need to know that and how many we're going to do. And like Jim says, this is something that's out there that we're looking at, but it's not really a priority for purchase at this point until we get some more information.
Good.
Ready? So then I would move to direct Cheryl to do a funds transfer from the Public Works budget to the 401 fund to reflect the sale of the 2005 Chevy 1500 in the amount of 78,000, $7,800.
I'll second it. Rob?
I'll call for the vote.
Rob, aye?
Janet, aye.
Sue, aye.
Where'd Ron go?
Rod, aye.
Jesse, aye.
And then I would also move to direct Cheryl to push out the 2010 CAT grater replacement, And then I would also move to direct Cheryl to push out the 2010 CAT grader replacement, whatever number of years makes sense. You can 12 years, 10 years, whatever it makes sense.
Is this a motion?
This is a motion.
Okay, so...
Push it out and then do, do the analysis.
The motion, 2023.
Okay, well, I'm just reading what's on here.
I, I know, it's not right, so I just want to make sure that the motion's clear.
Okay, so, thank you. So, the 2023 CAT grader out to reflect what the actual lifespan is probably going to be, and then show us what, how that would impact our levy. So, I'm not suggesting we do it, I just want to see the analysis side by side. That's my motion, and I'm sticking to it.
This is Sue, I'll second.
I'll call for the vote.
Robert?
So, discussion on that, help me understand that. So, we'd be pushing that from 2023 out to, would it be 2030?
Nope, we would be looking at the one that says 2030, which is just seven years from, and then push it out, whatever.
So, for a 10-year lifespan.
I don't know what the right number is. You're saying the last one was 13 years, maybe 11 years is the right compromise? I don't know. Between you and, and Jack, you can come up with a reasonable number.
Because, I mean, some...
I know you wanted to stay...
Graders in the 1960s, so...
I know. Just pick a number that makes sense.
Okay.
Both been seconded. Aye, Rob?
Janet, aye.
Sue, aye.
Ron, aye.
Jesse, aye.
Do I need to do anything about the ones we've talked about that were errors? Or did you get those?
We'll figure out the sheet.
Okay, great.
Because as part, as part of your request, I'm going to have to throw values in for vehicles for sale prices, and then try to come up with values for new prices.
That sounds like fun.
Oh, yeah, that's a ton, ton of fun. It's, oh, by the way, it's going to be a guess, too. I mean, because nobody knows what it's going to be, right?
Yeah, I know, that's for sure.
Let's flip pages, then, to...
Fire?
Fire. Equipment capital.
We'll have to do this one from the paper, somehow we're locked here, so...
Okay.
We're going to be discussing the, our equipment capital fund. The, Jesse and Ron and I met with the Forest Lake Fire Board, or the Fire Board, back in March, and were given notice on some of these equipment purchases. And then, back at the end of July, then Jesse and Rob and I met with them, and they outlined what their proposals were, and for 2025, it was to purchase two util, two brush trucks, brush rigs, and one utility truck, and to purchase some additional radios. I think their total purchase price for this was something like $288,000. Our share's 20%, so based on that, for our capital cost for that participation was going to be $52,000 or $53,000. You'll have to pardon me because I'm doing this from memory, but Cheryl's got the sheet, she can correct me if I'm off too far on the dollars. But the proposal for that, for our share of the Fire Board would be, I believe, $52,000?
51,000?
Yep, $51,950 for those three pieces of equipment and the radio purchase. And then you can see in the subsequent years what their plans are, their purchases going forward for 2026 and 2027 are not substantial. And Al said, you know, that's going to be the end of their big-ticket purchase items until, I believe there was another bigger purchase that was done, going to be done maybe after 2031 was a ladder truck. But now, when you're talking about a ladder truck, you're talking $3 to $4 million. But that's not on the horizon at this point, so our share for this year would be $52,000.
Yeah, and all the other numbers, that's based on what their, their direction, what they gave us, so we don't, you know, we can't say, no, you can't buy one of those. I mean, we could vote, but our vote, they'll, they'll vote us.
Yeah, and, you know, it's, it's based on the, the Fire Board vote, and I think the explanation given by Al was very reasonable and justified, so I think we approved that, and $52,000 is not a lot of money for having access to three vehicles, and I think it's five or six radios that they're purchasing. Those radios are like about $3,000 bucks apiece.
Okay. And so the difference between the actual projected expenditure and the levy is putting the money aside for those bigger purchases in the future?
Correct.
Cash flowing those?
But there, there will be one big one coming up, but it's going to be further down the road, but unless you start keeping, doing that aside, then...
Yep, I agree.
You'll face the big deficits.
Got to save up for it.
Yep.
So, I got a question, Jack, and maybe you can help me, or Jesse. With the sixth that's under the 2025 proposed budget, and it's for the three purchases, $16,100. So, are those after they trade in or sell a different vehicle? That's what you was saying?
No, that would go down, that does not account for what they would get for selling those, so that would be the high end of that.
I'd like to know where you can buy a truck for 16 grand.
Well, that's just our 20%.
Oh, okay.
Multiply that by five, and you get the price.
There we go. Thank you.
You wanted a piece of that, didn't you?
Where do we get these deals?
So, no, Rob, that does not include...
Okay, that's just our 20%.
And actually, they've already sold that utility one truck that they're proposing about replacing, so it'd be involving the sale of two of those brush trucks.
Right, right, I recall that.
Yep.
So, are we on the fire hall capital now?
Do we have to make a motion on this page? Are we doing it by page? Or just the changes?
Al, if you want to do it, I think the fire hall capital is the next one on the list.
Okay.
So, you can see from that, we did have an expenditure this year, and that was for the roof replacement on this fire hall. Fortunately, we had a little, we had over $100,000 in that account, so that covered that, and that's why we're starting this year out with a lower fund amount.
So, we don't have any proposed projects for this year?
No.
And we've, it doesn't look like we've ever budgeted for like improvements, a regular num, I mean, just a projected number.
No, you, you, you can see, though, that there hasn't been a lot spent out of that fund, which is good. I think there was a, was there not a furnace replacement or something done not too long ago, and then the roof? How old is that building, Jim?
1998.
Well, it's, you know, it's still, it's 32 years. The roof, the roof was probably overdue. And of course, inside, you know, it's concrete floor and masonry, so there's probably not a lot that can go wrong with it, but unfortunately, when something does go wrong, it's a pretty big ticket item.
And, and relating to that roof, I think we got 12 years extra out of it, is what Central had said. It was more of a 20-year, 25-year roof, so maybe it was a little less than 12 years at EPDM.
Yeah, I don't remember what it was.
But, yeah, okay. But I know there's a warranty on it. What is it, 20 years? Or is it a 30-year warranty? Where, we had to pay for labor, but the, the Firestone or whoever it was would cover the product, so we do have...
The roof was guaranteed for 30 years, I believe.
Yep, but then we would just have to pay for the labor for them to replace it, but not the product itself. We got a little buffer.
So, it doesn't look like there's much on that one?
Nope.
Moving on?
On to the next.
General fund.
We, we skipped the park ones, I think we pretty well covered those, unless you have any other questions on...
No.
I think we just need to have the, the revised sort of version of it. I mean, I, I see this here, but it's hard to tie all those together with what their priorities are.
And we'll get that to you for the next meeting. So, this is the last one. So, this is just the general capital fund that we have. And it's essentially involves parking lot pavement, there's, we're expenditures for AD, AE door buttons in the past, computers, printers, copiers. There was a proposal in here for a security system. I know it's been discussed before I got here. I don't know what council's desire is to continue any pursuit of that, but those are what this item covers.
Yeah, we didn't, we didn't do that, so I know we had a presentation on it. I can't remember what the outcome was, if we were waiting for more information, or we didn't, we never brought it to a vote.
Yeah. And, you know, I, I guess it probably comes down to, you know, what the feeling is for the need for a security system. Our current security system, as we did put signs up outside that say you're currently being recorded, but there's no, of course, there's no camera system there.
Has that helped?
Well, we had vandalism, I mean, that's what prompted the whole discussion, is that there was a couple of incidences of vandalism, so that was the idea behind the cameras and the security system.
From, from that aspect, or for whatever other reason, sometimes you have vandalism, and then kids grow up and get their driver's license, and they go vandalize somewhere else. Maybe that's the part of it. I, I don't know if it's had any, but there's been no vandalism here, reported vandalism on the building, at least in the past eight months, so...
Okay.
Maybe that's something we wanted just to keep hanging out there, you know, maybe at some point, with the way things are, and, you know, lots of people, everybody gets home security systems, and at some point, it may be necessary to consider that.
Do we get any discount on our insurance if we have a security system?
I can't say for sure. I think as a homeowner, you get discounts for your insurance if you have a bed in place. And I would say it would probably be something that, that would apply here, too.
Well, we could move it to next year and then have more discussion about it.
Do we get the new fiber line this year? Was that actually done?
No.
And was, so, is that because we didn't need it, or we just haven't done it yet?
It's appearing that we don't need it.
Oh.
So, Phil, our IT guy, has been testing it and collecting some data, but in the last conversation that we had about a week ago, he said that the fiber line is appearing to be just fine.
That's good news.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Well, then, do we take that out? Or do we need it in five years?
I don't, I'm not a fiber guy, I don't know how long fiber lines last, so I mean, are they good for 30 years? You know what I mean? I, I don't know.
Is this, is this between City Hall and the Public Works building?
Yes.
Okay, so it's not...
Basically, all of the internet, the server, all of that stuff is hosted in Public Works. So, that's the, that's the connection.
Okay. And pretty soon, we're not going to need fiber lines anyway, because we, we're going to have some kind of satellite internet.
Oh, yeah.
Starlink.
That's in the future. They already have Starlink, it's not...
I thought you were going to say we were going to have a new public, or a new city hall over by Public Works.
No.
Well, one, one thing that we might want to look at, just start investigating, though, is the possibility of a need for a generator for this building. And if we do have a major storm event, I know we have one over at Public Works, but most of our records and things are over here, this is going to be, going to be maybe Command Central. This was kind of exacerbated at our last Public Works meeting, when the power went out and we had to cancel the meeting while we were in process, so...
I think that makes the most sense. I totally agree that that would be a, a good use.
And, you know, what, what we can do is start getting some prices and information. The, you know, one of the issues here is we have, I know we have two different electrical systems. We have a separate panel for the community senior center, and another panel for this room and the office space, so there'd be some switching gear stuff that would be probably a little redundant or duplicated, but I think that's one thing we just kind of need to look at, and at least get some information on what the cost would be.
And are the generators in Public Works, what do they run off, a diesel, or what do they run off, of gas?
So, we have, we have natural gas and gas.
Oh, you do have natural gas, okay.
It would be a separate generator that sits here, so it would be a permanent generator that just, that your power goes out, transfers, you may or may not, I mean, you would notice a little blip, but that would be it.
Okay. Yeah, I think we should add that. I agree.
So, on that fiber line, I just looked it up quick, just generic Google search, and it said the lifespan at very high load is 40 years, so...
Hmm, 40, okay.
My Google said the same thing, so... It's like we're set for a while. You know, there were some things that we've talked to Phil about, I'm assuming those are not in a, in the capital fund, they're just under the general fund? Okay, so we won't talk about those tonight. So, do you need any more direction from us on this? I think you got what you need?
I think we have enough to get you what you need for your next meeting.
Okay. Good.
Lady Engineer.
Good evening. One item that I have is the closeout of our 2022 Kettle River Heights project. So, we have the final documentation before you. The final payment would be in the amount of $24,893.98. The final contract amount is about 8% higher than our original bid amount. We did have to do some additional paving on VAS, or just to address some drainage issues there. We did replace an additional culvert on the project, and we had to use some additional topsoil for edging along the new patrimonyous payments. That, those are some items that resulted in that overage on the, on the final contract amount, but I do recommend final payment for this project. Correct.
So, is this all going to Valley Paving? Is that the, is that who the payment?
That's correct, yes.
Payment is going to?
Yes.
So, then I would... So then I would move to approve final payment in the amount of $24,893.98 to Valley Paving Incorporated for the 2022 Kettle River Heights project.
And this is Sue, I'll second.
Any questions, anyone? I'll call for the vote.
Rob, aye.
Janet, aye.
Sue, aye.
Ron, aye.
And Jesse, aye.
I have nothing else.
City Attorney.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I do not have any updates, but am ready to answer any questions that you may have.
No questions?
Nope.
No.
All right.
But good to see you.
Yes, it is.
City Council members, Rob.
I have no report, Mayor.
Janet.
I have one thing. Jack and I met with the Anoka County Election Integrity Team on August 8th, last Thursday. And we have a couple of members of the team out here in our, in our audience. So the folks that we met with were Brenda Miller, which Brenda's out there, Lisa Hendrickson, Lisa's out there, and then Dave Tormannan. I hope I pronounced that right. Pretty close. I can spell it. I know I spelled it right in my notes. Anyway, if you remember, a few meetings ago, we had Derek from the same group that came and did a little presentation during public open forum. And the question he left us with was whether or not we would like to have a more in-depth presentation. And so Jack and I took the opportunity to meet with Brenda and Lisa and Dave just to hear more about what it was that they were, that they were trying to accomplish. We have a couple of handouts that we got from them. And I would have to say that I walked away with a much better understanding of what it was that they were trying to accomplish. And I think, and you guys can certainly pipe up if I get this wrong, but my, what I felt at the end of the meeting was that the goal that they're really trying to promote is to give our residents in Columbus confidence that the election results that end up being published are the real thing. And they talked about different parts of the election process, including absentee balloting and things like that. But I think the main focus of the discussion was on hand counts. So there are, Anoka County as part of their sort of quality control does select a few precincts and do some hand counts, not for all of the offices, but for selected offices. So it may, it may or may not include something for Columbus. And I think the group's feeling is that we want to know that Columbus's election results are accurate. And, you know, I think you can go down the list of all the different things where the system could break down. I mean, I've seen Lori has walked me through the process and I feel really comfortable and confident of what the staff is doing and what's happening here. The part I don't feel as comfortable and confident of is the system's vulnerability to hackers. Because if you, you think about all the different huge organizations that spend millions and millions and millions of dollars on security, even, even security companies that get hacked, I don't know that you could ever really be sure that, that any system is immune from that. And I think what they are proposing is that if, if there is some process that is in place to not do a complete recount of everything, but to do, you know, kind of a systematic check, that maybe that would deter a hacking situation because they'd know that we would catch it. And I don't think that's, I mean, it's a proactive strategy. And so what I'm, you can look over their materials, but what they would like to do is actually come and kind of share with the entire council what they shared with Jack and I, maybe a little bit abbreviated version. And then the ask would be whether or not we would be willing to pass a resolution after hearing their presentation to request for Anoka County that we would do a post-election, post-election review, which is a selective hand count of offices in our one precinct. We would use the election judges that we currently already have certified to do that hand count. And we just did some sort of back of the napkin figuring of what it would cost. It would be somewhere around $1,200 if, if we pay them what we pay them to be election judges, which we would have to bear. But I think, you know, the question before you today is not that question. The question is, are you interested in hearing more? I think it was, it was a very worthwhile presentation, in my opinion. Jack, you can speak, you know, from your perspective. And then after that presentation, you, you would decide whether or not you would consider that resolution and that would be done at, at a council meeting. When I looked at the calendar, the next workshop that we have is, I wrote this down, September, do, 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 here it is, September 3rd. And then our next council meeting after that would be the 11th. And Brenda, so speak up, I know you said you had a tentative date with Anoka.
No, the city's Anoka did.
They did?
Ended after the 3rd.
Okay. So that's off the, that's off the, we can't have a presentation that night. The other option would be to have the presentation on the 4th when we do our joint meeting. That would allow us to take action on the 11th if we decide that that's what we want to do. And is the 4th is okay with?
It seems to work best.
Okay. Or you, or you could say, no, thank you. I mean, so I'm throwing it out there. I would recommend that we have them back to do the presentation for everybody. But, and we certainly have the experts here if you have specific questions you want to ask.
Yeah, I think that would be good.
I agree. I think it would be good to get the, get the presentation. And I am in favor of making sure that we are, give our residents confidence that we're doing the right thing.
And I think that's, that's, that was the consensus after we heard it, too, that, you know, $1,200 is not a lot of money to spend to reassure our residents that all things are well in Columbus.
Janet, September the 4th is the Planning Commission meeting.
Isn't that the joint meeting, though?
We had the joint meeting.
They have a joint?
We have a meeting scheduled for the 4th, too.
Okay, all right.
Is that, is that an okay?
Yeah, that's fine. I thought the other one was the one that was the joint meeting.
Yeah. At the last one we had, we set the next one, which was on the 4th.
So Janet, would this be more of a little deeper dive than what Derek did? I think it was a meeting or?
Yeah, it would be. It would be. Yep.
We could request at least a half hour or so.
Sure.
Question Q and A afterwards.
Yep.
And we're doing Lindard next week, and I think we have an hour. Yeah, we have 45 minutes at Lindard on the 20th.
Yeah. And I was thinking 30 minutes would work well because we're, this is a joint meeting, so we've got to make time for the questions that are from the Planning Commission, too. But Ron, do you have anything you want to chime in on?
No, thank you. I agree. It would be nice to listen.
Okay. So then, if there aren't any other questions or discussion, then I would just move to add a presentation by the Anoka County Election Integrity Team to the agenda on the September 4th joint meeting. And then after that, you guys can decide whether or not you want to consider a resolution at the following council meeting.
And this is Sue, I'll second.
Any other questions? I'll call for the vote.
Rob, aye.
Janet, aye.
Sue, aye.
Ron, aye.
And Jesse, aye.
All right. We'll see you back on the 4th. Thank you so much.
Before, what time? Put them at the front of the, like at 6:00?
I think that would make sense so that you don't have to sit through the whole thing. So it'd be at 6 o'clock, right?
Yep.
Yep. Here. Yeah. Yeah. Thank you for coming.
And thank you for sitting through the whole meeting until the last.
I know. I know. And also thank you for what you're doing. I mean, there's 20 people that meet like every week on this topic. And if any of you have tried to break through the wall of government trying to get information, I mean, there's, I give you guys credit. You have done a lot of work and have shown a lot of stamina in trying to break through all of that and create the relationships. So thank you so much.
It's been three years, though.
Yep. Yep.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sue?
I do have one thing. So I attended the Forest Lake Cable Commission last week, and we actually had another meeting just a few weeks before that. The Columbus resident that is one of the commission members said he needs to put in his resignation. So I'm working with Jack to put a posting out there on our website for a replacement for him. But we already have identified someone who is willing to do it that I spoke to. So it's just, it's a bit of a formality, but we are going through the process. So just wanted to give that update.
Thank you. Ron, anything from you?
Well, all I can say is thanks to Jack and Cheryl for allowing me or figuring out how to do this Zoom. Never done it before. And I apologize. I'm sick tonight. But other than that, I have nothing. Thank you.
Thanks for joining.
Yeah.
Can I add one more thing? Our next Fall Fest committee meeting is on the 20th of August at 6:00 in the community center. We had agreed on that date at our last one, but I'll send out an email to everybody on the group, which includes all of you, just to remind you. It'll be the time that you'll be signing up or they, everybody will be signing up for their volunteer duties. And we'll get an update from everybody on where we're at with things. So it's coming quick.
Okay.
Yeah, I haven't been attending those, but I will be helping, just to let you know.
Okay. Well, if you show up on that day, we'll actually have you sign on the dotted line.
That's good.
And it sounds like the car show guys are doing their, their thing and expect to even have a bigger turnout than last year. So it's going to be fun. And if you come again this time, there's going to be a petting zoo and there's going to be a trout pond. And so you bring your little kitties with you and your kitties' friends and they'll have a good time.
Along with the other things, the bouncy house.
Oh, yeah.
And the face painting and a balloon artist.
I have already had a specific request to make sure we put it on the calendar. So we will be there.
Okay, good, good job.
Good. Jim, Public Works.
No report, Mr. Mayor.
Jack, Administrator's report.
The only thing I have to report is the election for the county and state primary went very smooth, was executed flawlessly. I'd like to give credit to our staff for a job well done on that, especially Lori Spangler, Chris Crans. We're here all day Saturday and then they worked Monday late. And then the election was done very well and we had no issues. So my hats offered to our staff for a great job they did.
And you said there's 245 people?
225.
225?
Yep. Which is like about a 9% turnout rate.
And does that, what does that compare with our other, I mean, that seems high for a primary.
It's probably about normal from what I've seen from the other cities, especially in northern Anoka County. And we didn't anticipate a stampede, but, you know, it was, it was kind of steady. But again, it was a good trial run for the general election.
Good.
That's it?
That's it.
Anything else? No? Then I will take a look at the announcements. Planning Commission, the 21st, EDA 530, and a regular meeting at 6:30 on August 22nd, Public Works on August 27th, City Council meeting on August 28th at 6:00. If there's nothing else, would someone like to make the motion to adjourn? So move. And a second?
I'll second.
All the vote.
Rob, aye.
Janet, aye.
Sue, aye.
Ron, aye.
And Jesse, aye. Our meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, everyone.